Okay, so, we need the letter and some of the papers. I'll take a flash on these.
I am the Assistant Athletic in the United States of America and member of the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. It's my understanding that we have no visitors wishing to speak. Then we have two members of the board that have committee reports to start review just with the safety committee.
Yes, our district-wide safety committee met on December 8th. As a reminder, we have members from all of the buildings, district level members, as well as parents and students. We also have Amherst Police Officers, Emergency Services, and some BOCs, Safety and Risk members in the district-wide safety committee. The first thing we did was we reviewed the capital project and the impact to increasing safety in and around our buildings. And we also discussed some professional development in mental health, health awareness, and procedure. We then broke up into building teams to discuss important information and shared throughout some articles. We read some three, we read three articles prior to our meeting. And discussed the lockdown procedures, and then came back and shared some best practices. And then the Amherst Police Department discussed an upcoming gun safety presentation with the panel in summer, which I don't have a date for that, but. And then the topic of grant assessment training with an outside trainer, and we hope to gain some access, we hope to access some grant monies to facilitate that.
Good.
Thank you. Before we go up, we have, yes, the ECASB Budget and Finance Committee met last week to review the budget. And we're continuing to maintain the dues level that we've been at. There's no increase in dues for the districts. For, I think this is the ninth or tenth year that dues have not been increased. We continue to offer like dessert events and other events at no charge to districts and no charge fees just for dinner events. The, you know, it's a robust programming list that's on the budget as pre-COVID events get back into play. There was discussion, there is money in the bank. ECASB has, has, you know, a significant amount of money in the bank. So there was, last year we approved a, an investment policy. So we're going to be looking into trying to increase the return on that money. And that's about it.
Thank you. Somebody else think of anything while she was talking? Any additions? Well, then we will move on to the superintendents.
Thank you. We have three items tonight. First on the agenda is Mrs. Wazinski with the first presentation in the budget development process. Welcome.
Thank you. First one, it's our first look. So at this point in time, pretty much every single number in here is an estimate. But it gives us an opportunity to take a look at our current programs. If everything stayed the same, what increases or what costs would be, would we be expecting to see next year in order to maintain our programming? So we'll look at our revenues and our expenditure projections, overall, what that looks like, and then a summary of where we are now and what our next steps are for the budget development process. So on the revenue side, we have a property tax levy. So it is, as tax cap compliant, it is 1.92% with a very modest growth of 0.0014% in accessibility for the town and capped at a 2% increase, which is part of the tax cap legislation. That includes our capital exclusion of about 842,000, which is the difference between voter authorized capital expenditures and the aid that comes in to help offset them. So because the voters authorized it, we're allowed to add it to the 2% formula. For state aid, we left it flat. So this presentation shows no increase whatsoever in state aid. We have that exactly the same as it was in our budget presentation last year. And the reason we did that is because, one, the executive budget proposal hasn't been released yet. It'll be the end of January, February 1st. But doing that also helps highlight the importance of our state aid, state aid increases, and really shows us when we look at our expenditures for next year, how the state aid helps offset those increases in expenditures. We did project some increases to miscellaneous revenues, about just under 3%, or 175,000. And that is mostly due to sales tax revenue. So during COVID, we thought we were going to take some pretty large hits in our income and sales tax. We didn't take those hits. And then as we came out of COVID, it's been going up and up. So which is wonderful, we're able to project an increase of about $200,000 for next year. We did increase interest earnings as the rates are fluctuating. That is a very conservative number. We just added to what we have now, but we'll update that through the years as we move through this year and start seeing the return on the investments we're making in this fiscal year. We'll adjust that accordingly. And then we have one pilot coming off the books, which means it was an agreement that a company we go to town to have reduced tax payments. That agreement is coming to an end. So the assessed value of that property will now go back on the rolls. So we no longer need to invoice that separately. Transfers, we are keeping it consistent with what we're doing this year and into next year as well. We have $1 million from our fund balance to help offset the contingency line of $1 million. $80,000 in reserves, which is unemployment tax cert, also matched by an expenditure of $80,000. And then this year, we're also transferring $119,000 out of our debt service fund to help reduce the tax levy needs. So those are funds, our debt service fund, our premiums and proceeds that we had from our last bond borrowing, which are meant to help offset future tax increases. So we're applying half of it this year, and then we'll apply the other half of it next year. And that is also factored into our property tax gap. So overall, we are looking at about a 1.5% increase in total revenues, again, completely without any state aid increases. We all know that the phase in of foundation aid is expected, or at least promised, to be completed in this upcoming year. We don't know if that will come to fruition or what exactly that will look like for us. So we just left it at zero so that we could focus on the expenditure side and our other revenue categories.
And I think there's optimism around that, especially after today's State of the State address by the governor. She didn't mention much about education in her speech, but didn't mention the commitment to funding and honoring that full phase in of the foundation aid. So there's positive signs relative to that.
And then our next two years of projections, most importantly, our tax cap stays relatively consistent at around 2%. And that was part of the reason we chose these two years to apply that debt service fund, so that we could keep that consistent for our taxpayers. On the expenditure side, we have about a five and a half percent increase in personnel costs, which is about $1.7 million. We have almost all of our contracts closed, so those figures are able to be projected. This is only about $300,000 more than we were last year at this point. So that does not take into account any resignations or retirements that we may receive in this year. The reason it's going up a little bit is also because we're continuing the plan to phase in some of our stimulus positions, out of our grants, back into general fund. It was our plan from the beginning to pull four or five positions back every year as our state aid was increasing and to absorb those in the budget. So that dollar not includes continuing that plan and that process. On the benefit side, we have an increase in our ERS rate this year from 11.6% to 13.1%, which is an increase of about $150,000. TRS is actually going down slightly, but will result in an increase to our budget because our salaries are going up. We also applied a few thousand dollars of grant funds to our TRS costs, which helped keep those some level. And I believe those are in our title grant. FICA Med, we are expecting the rate to stay the same, which is an increase based on salary increases of 150,000. On the health insurance side, we increased just under 500,000 on the expenditure side. We don't have a final budget. That was just a very preliminary budget based on their projections. But Mr. Vile and I will work with Assured Partners, who is our consultant for health insurance. They used to be Premier and other Assured. Same people, just they change. We'll continue to work with them to fine tune that and update that through the budget development process. And then for workers' comp, I estimated an increase of 1%, but we haven't had the meeting yet where we determine rates. So we're part of the consortium where we actually have seen on the board. So we have a vote in how those premiums are set as a whole. So we haven't met yet, but I, our budget's pretty good in that area. Under general support, we have projected an 8.6% increase, which is about 229,000. And then I have outlined some of the categories that we put some of the larger increases in. Liability insurance, legal fees, utilities was a big one. We all know that gas and electric are skyrocketing this year. We had increased our budget last year. It's still very tight this year, if not a little short. So we increased it again for next year. We will have updated projections from our consultants later usually in February. So we'll keep watching that, but we wanted to make sure that we had that increase in this first presentation. Buildings and grounds, we added 50,000 for materials and supplies and another 40,000 for contract services. That is to help compensate for supply increases and for a lot of our consumables. And the contract services is just increased cost of services. Some of the added services such as striking and lining our parking lots. We've allowed new pavement through our capital projects. We want to make sure that we're taking care of it and staying on top of it so that we have the lifespan and longevity out of it that we were expecting. Copy paper, also very expensive this year. Copy paper is extremely difficult to purchase. We have some colors that are simply unavailable. We struggle to even get white copy paper. So there is an increase there. And then some miscellaneous expenses among different codes. We did maintain our capital outlay project until we may not do one this year. We kept the line there so that we have it for next year if we do a capital outlay. And then, as I mentioned, our contingency line is there for any unplanned or surprised expenditures. Because it's offset by fund balance, it does not negatively affect the taxpayers by having that extra million dollars in our budget. On the instruction side, we have a $352,000 increase, about seven and a half percent. And this is almost all for tuition and student services. Chartered tuition, special education. The service expenses are things like nurses, contract nurses for our students, any therapies that we don't provide in-house that we contract out for that are specialized. For some of our specialized students, that's included in that dollar amount. Health services. We increased the athletic budget due to the increased cost of officials and the athletic trainer. Everything's going up a little bit. So we were trying to make sure that next year's budget was sufficient to be able to maintain current programming. And then we had a $25,000 increase that was along a bunch of different lines that supported the building activities in each of our four buildings, as well as the continuation of our partnership with the town of Amherst for our SRO. We increased BOC's 223,000, which was four and a half percent. As you know, we have a participation meeting every year where we go line by line by line to determine what our needs are going to be for next year and what those costs are going to be. We have that meeting scheduled for the end of this month. So for this presentation, we assumed a 3% increase across all of our lines, which was about 111,000 with the exception of special ed. We increased the special ed tuition 5%. And then I added another 50,000 on there for an extra spot for tuition if it's needed. We had those spots in our current year budget. We had three of them, and to date we used two of them. So we rolled that up and then added one more. Transportation, we estimated about five and a half percent increase, which is about 204,000. We are still with First Student, and we are entering into the second year, ever two-year contract extension. So we'll be able to maintain that until next year. But this is an area specifically that we want to keep looking at during budget development. We do have some transportation services written into our stimulus grants so that we could add a bus or two to reduce density on our buses. As the grants end, we have to make the decision on if we're going to end those extra buses or if we want to roll them into general fund. So this budget does not include rolling those into general fund, but it's something that we have on our radar to think about and look into as we're going into budget development through the season. So this is something that we might want to increase based on how things continue on and, you know, what our state aid looks like. And for debt service, it's staying relatively flat. The change in $6,000 is just the difference as our premium payments are going down and our interest payments are changing. It's a very minor change. So overall, we have an expenditure budget of 71,821,000, which is an increase of three and a half million or 5.23%, which is a little bit less of an increase of where we landed last year. But as we mentioned, there are still a lot of changes that need to be made, a lot of decisions that need to be made. And to date, we have not gone through to see what those increases may or may not mean. So overall, we do show a budget gap, but again, can't stress enough, zero state aid is factored in here. So the increase in revenue is everything but state aid, 69.3 million, which is just over a million dollar increase from the current year. Expenditures, three and a half million, 71.8 million with a deficit or a gap of 2.5. The tax levy is compliant at 1.92%, which results in an increase of about 742,000. So between that and year kind of sales tax is where that million dollars in revenue increase is coming from. We will look to update state aid in our next presentation after we hear from Governor Hokel. And our expenditures are 5% or three and a half million. And they are spread out over all the categories, which actually wasn't very surprising because we all know with the market and the current economy, cost of almost everything is increasing. And our costs were very uniform across the board, which is very reflective of what's happening outside of our school. So what are our next steps? So as you know, these are all estimates. Our next steps are to see what state aid projections are going to be after we hear from the governor. The executive cabinet, so Dr. Shannigan, Mr. Vile, Superintendent Penella, and I, we'll meet with all of the administrators and all of the department heads and go over their budgetary needs. We have individual meetings with all of them over the next two to three weeks. And then we start prioritizing those needs and looking at what we want and can fit into the budget. We'll look at other areas of the budget outside of those meetings that may need to be increased. And we talked about a couple of them. Transportation is one, utilities is another. Special education is always an area that we look those out at. And then finally, we will want to consider possibly having an allocation of funds in our budget to support the upcoming capital project to help offset the local share. So as we share publicly and with our voters, our plan is to accumulate $3.2 million over the next five years to help offset the local share for the recently approved capital project. And this will be our first opportunity to start thinking about how we want to do that and start planning it into our budget so that we're taking care of it early and not in a year or four or five. We want to make sure that we're meeting that allocation and that promise to our community. So our next presentation will be the meeting in February. Hopefully, we'll have information from the state regarding state aid. We'll have had our meetings with the administrators, so we'll have more information there. Are there any questions that anyone has?
I just have a comment. So the number you use for interest earnings is what we should be earning monthly, concern me.
Well, this is only general fund money. It's not, it's not capital money, so that'll be captured separately. And it was based on the monies that we had upcoming up to this point this year. So we had just started receiving our state aid payments and our tax payments. So those interest earnings weren't reflected in the projections that I was using. So that's why I mentioned that we will continue to monitor those, and I'll update those in the next projection based on the revenues that we're receiving this year once all of the investments are not only in place, because some of them are already, but once we start seeing what those returns are going to be.
Well, they're long enough, 4%. So.
So we'll watch for the next step. I knew the number was low. I just didn't want to overshoot it, so I increased it 212% knowing that the figures I was using are the early figures of the year when we're not, when we don't have all that money in. So by February, March, we'll have much clearer data and picture to be able to project that.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Procher and Mrs. Martin to provide us with our first building update of the year from Smallwood Drive Elementary. All this talk about utility costs makes me want to shut the heat off. So while they're getting set up, I'll just click that off.
I just wanted to mention, I appreciate Mrs. Wazinski mentioning the paper shortage. It is, it is real.
It is real.
And we're feeling it at, at Smallwood. I've been in the district for 25 years, and I don't know that I'd be okay if we didn't have our golden rod. So that's right. That is a color that we certainly use a lot here, Amherst. Well, thank you for this opportunity to share on a few of the highlights that are occurring at Smallwood. It's truly an honor and privilege for Mrs. Martin and I to serve as the building administrators. This past summer, our mindfulness committee adopted a new mission statement that matches our vision and initiatives. Simply stated, our mission is to provide our students with the most memorable elementary experience possible. We believe that our presentation tonight will give you a glimpse of how we are putting the words of our new mission statement into action. One way that action occurred was with the changing of the look of our school to give our building a more elementary feel. Thanks to the support of the Board of Education, District Administration, our Facilities Department, and the Smallwood Parent Teachers Association, a much-needed facelift, which includes a new coat of paint, decorative vinyl, and promotion of several of our initiatives that we are so proud of. Smallwood Elementary School looks like it feels inside, warm and welcoming. One initiative that we are very excited about is Rory's Place. Our mindfulness committee, in collaboration with our New York State and National School of Character who were in review teams, felt that it was important to create a multi-use space that is connected to our prioritization of social and emotional learning. Rory's Place serves several purposes. Quiet place for teachers to talk to students. A place to reward students for work classes for great behavior. An opportunity for a class to do a read aloud or small group instruction. And a place for a teacher to bring a student and let go of those strong feelings that they may be having. Rory's Place has served our building well, and we are thankful to have this additional calming spot in our building. In an effort to share our highlights in a clear and concise way, Mrs. Martin and I once again returned to the district's three priorities, which have been the foundation of our strategic plan for several years. This evening, we will be highlighting Smallwood's initiatives from student life, learning and achievement, and Amherst pride. There are several initiatives that we are proud of and excited to highlight as part of student life at Smallwood. What's new at Smallwood, 36 little tigers who have quickly been adopted into our SDS family. When Superintendent Penella shared the news that Smallwood was going to have two full-day universal pre-kindergarten classes, our building was absolutely thrilled. How wonderful for the four-year-olds that live on our surrounding streets to get to go to school in their neighborhood. Miss Zappi and Mrs. Schutz, transferred from Windermere, have been exceptional additions to our faculty and staff. Their students have been very popular, especially with our fifth graders, who've gone out of their way to serve as big brothers and big sisters modeling for them the Smallwood way. In addition, we are thrilled that our 36 students will be most comfortable when they return back in the fall for kindergarten, making the transition a simple one because they have a familiarity with our building and how we do things. We are so proud of our initiatives that are connected to social and emotional learning. We continue to recognize as a building the importance of supporting students with their feelings and providing them with the necessary skills to react to those feelings in a positive way. We asked Ms. Zeberts and Mrs. Close to share how social and emotional learning is embedded in a Smallwood classroom.
Hi, I'm Molly Yards.
And I'm Lindsay Close.
And we are the kindergarten integrated co-teachers at Smallwood Drive Elementary.
We are going to share with you how we implement social emotional learning and mindfulness throughout our day in kindergarten.
A strong SEL curriculum will connect classrooms, schools, families, and communities, all of which are vital for student learning and growth.
As we have created the structure of our classroom and our SEL curriculum, we have seen students become problem solvers, flexible thinkers, intrinsically motivated to learn and grow, and also become more self-aware.
Activities you may see throughout the day in our classroom include yoga and mindful minutes such as back drawing, coloring, sinking, positive affirmations, stillness, mindfulness snacks, and hands-on cooperative games. You will hear discussions of feelings and emotions, as well as opportunities to practice strategies to help self-regulate when strong emotions take over. Because this is done throughout the day, students independently connect SEL into academic areas such as writing and also making connections to books they are listening to or reading.
So why do we do this throughout our day? We know that students encounter times of frustration in both academic and social situations. Learning self-regulation strategies increases self and body awareness so that the body can be brought back to a calm and peaceful state so learning can take place.
Research shows mindfulness and SEL benefits students by reducing stress, reducing rumination, which means students don't perseverate on negative thoughts, clearing working memory space, allowing for concepts in learning to become more concrete, improving focus and behavior, lose reactivity, and strengthening synapses in the brain.
As Molly and I continue our growth through professional development in this area, we continue to share with our colleagues, our students, and our families by using clear and concise language, strategies pertaining to SEL, and mindfulness. This will allow our tiny tiger pups to be the best version of themselves in and out of the classroom.
Our school-wide theme this year at Smallwood is lending a paw. Our theme promotes the idea of paying it forward and making connections as a way to make a difference at Smallwood every day. The theme originated from the importance that our school community is intrinsically motivated. We want our students at Smallwood to do the right thing, not for an award, but because it's the right thing to do. There are several ways that we, as a Smallwood community, have lent a paw already this school year. We are writing a book modeling all the ways that students, faculty, and staff have gone out of their way to lend a paw and make a difference. At our faculty and staff Thanksgiving breakfast, students wrote messages of gratitude to all the adults in our building, sharing with them appreciation for the influence that they have on their lives daily. Our fifth grade food drive in December was a great success with several boxes of non-perishable items being donated to the United Presbyterian Church. with several boxes of non-perishable items being donated to the United Presbyterian Church of Buffalo. However, it's not the big events that we celebrate, it's the everyday actions. The actions that our community do for one another that we are so proud of.
Next, we will highlight some exciting projects under the pillar of learning and achievement. We are so fortunate in Amherst to have master teachers who work with the Buffalo Math Collaborative. They inspire the rest of our teachers by providing professional development on the context for learning and that fluency. I had the pleasure of sitting in yesterday on one of these professional development sessions that they had at Smallwood, and I heard some lively discussions about number strings in kindergarten. Our kindergarten teachers are also working to enhance our kindergarten Eureka curriculum to engage students and create math communities throughout the grade level in both buildings. Let's hear a little bit more about the program from our master teachers.
Hi, I'm Jill Zobel. I teach kindergarten at Smallwood and I'm a New York State master teacher.
Hi, I'm Jamie Tannelli. I teach kindergarten at Small and I'm also a New York State master teacher.
I'm Lori Chitt and I teach first grade at Smallwood and I am a master teacher.
We are here today to talk a little bit about the Buffalo Math Collaborative. The Buffalo Math Collaborative is a collaboration among teachers from Amherst, Kew, Tuva, and Maryville, as well as the New York State Master Teacher Program and Dr. Kara Anne from New York City.
The BMC comes together with Dr. Anne multiple times a year to study math practices. This model allows teachers to be active participants in planning lessons, observing lessons in classrooms with students, and then debriefing with her afterwards.
Working with the Buffalo Math Collaborative has helped us learn how to create a math community in our classrooms. A math community helps all students feel like mathematicians. Students learn how to listen to each other's ideas and respectfully agree and disagree with each other's math thinking. Each student has a math partner that they work with as they solve problems and play games. The best learning happens when students have a peer to talk with and share ideas with. As students work together to construct their own meaning and develop their own strategies, we celebrate that work by recording it and posting it on our strategy wall. Students are encouraged to try other mathematician strategies as they work on solving problems or playing games. The most important part of the math community is that all students feel their math thinking is valued. It doesn't matter what stage of math development a student is working at, everyone can contribute. Building the math community in our classrooms has helped to bring the joy back to math. Math time is a messy, loud, and fun part of our day.
The Context for Learning was designed to encourage our young mathematicians to pose problems, explore relations, and present ideas to a mathematical community. During lessons, you will find an abundance of manipulatives like the rec and rec as children use a variety of strategies to work on a problem. The emphasis during these investigations is focused on deepening students' conceptual understanding as opposed to just following mathematical steps and procedures.
The teachers who have been participating in the BMC work have learned how to do a math routine called number strings. A number string routine is done as a whole class. The teacher presents a string of related problems one at a time for students to mentally solve. They examine the problem, think on their own of a way they would solve, and turn and talk to a partner. Students then share strategies as the teacher captures their thinking on their paper. The string of related facts helps students see relationships between facts and to developmental math strategies to solve.
Moving forward, we have created a professional learning team to provide teachers in our district an opportunity to continue learning and deepen their understanding of math concepts that we learn in the Buffalo Math Collaborative. We will be meeting three to four times this school year in the evenings.
Smallwood was excited to bring its newest tigers into the building last June to meet their teachers and see their classrooms. The students worked in small groups through three different stations where they had the opportunity to meet and work with all the kindergarten teachers. The students got to listen to stories, create a paper version of our mascot Rory, and practice gross motor skills. Before the students left, they were given this specially-designed book to introduce them to all of the staff members that they would be working with in the fall, including our cafeteria staff and all of our special area teachers.
Some positive comments about the handout. Very cute, very nice.
Warm and welcoming.
Yes, warm and welcoming.
It's our mission.
Teachers began exploring the culturally responsive sustaining education framework and social justice standards before the pandemic, and unfortunately was put on hold as we brought students back. This important work was able to start back up this past summer and continued during our past two superintendent conference days. Not only did teachers explore the framework and standards, they learned how to connect it to literature and integrate it into our ELA curriculum, which allows them to add this into our curriculum without adding something new into their day. This work will continue to be a priority through professional development and as a part of our strategic plan moving forward. Kenny McCabe is going to explain a little bit more about the professional development at the elementary level.
Hi, I'm Kenny McCabe. I'm a third-grade teacher here at Smallwood Drive Elementary School. I am also the elementary ELA liaison for both buildings. I wanted to take a moment and share with you some of the professional development that occurred during superintendent's conferences.
This past fall, I was fortunate to work with Grace Malin, a retired teacher from Windermere, who is currently teaching at UB. We work with our elementary faculty on the topic of belonging. Belonging through diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's a topic that we here in Amherst have always valued. Our goal is to ensure a school community where everyone feels like they truly belong. Our work began in the summer of 2021 with a group of wonderful, highly-invested colleagues that gave of their time during the summer to look through literature that could help meet these four domains. Collectively, we gathered numerous, numerous titles of quality literature that addressed the four domains of identity, diversity, justice, and action. And we put together text sets, four books, for every teacher pre-K through grade five that we handed to teachers so that they could better meet the demands of these standards in our classroom. Teachers were given the books during professional development. They were afforded the opportunity to work with their colleagues and think about lesson planning and how they could carry out these lessons in their classroom. Also collectively put together a DEI book list of over 100 titles of books, and we cataloged them according to topic, um, to grade level, and to the domain that they hit. So teachers can easily access not only the four books that were given to them during professional development, but a plethora of other titles that they can easily locate and find help them address social justice in the classroom. Educators, we know that we are on this journey together and we are sharing what, how we use the books in a think tank. Other colleagues can benefit from what we have already done, but we know that our work is important and we are highly invested in continuing this work of making sure our students feel like they truly belong. Moving forward, diversity, equity, and inclusion will be embedded into our building's strategic plan.
I should mention, I'd be remiss if I didn't, the social emotional learning initiatives, the DEI, as well as the Buffalo Math Collaborative. That's all in collaboration with the curriculum office and Dr. Shannon. Those books are purchased by our curriculum office. We are so, so fortunate to have her support and our teachers certainly are benefiting from, from her collaborative approach with our building. There are several initiatives that I'd like to highlight as part of Amherst pride at Smallwood. For the third year in a row, Smallwood was awarded by character.org with a promising practice. Character.org, of course, is the same organization that our school has been recognized for our state and national school of character back in 2019. Just as a reminder, in 2020, Smallwood was, received a promising practice for The Power of a Puppet, which is the video series with Mrs. Noye and Rory. In 2021, Smallwood was awarded for our Mantra Mondays. That's the day of the week where we, as a community, wear a shirt with a positive message. And then in 2022, the hat-trick was complete when we won our promising practice for our school-wide theme of using our voice. Our theme emphasized the importance of using our voice to be kind, speak up for what is right, and to be encouraging. We are thrilled that character.org has recognized our efforts with all of our initiatives, including our Use Your Voice initiative. However, and most importantly, we are pleased that, we are pleased with the impact our initiatives have had on our students and our ability to use our voice in a positive way, especially after the pandemic. We're so proud of the several events that meet our mission statement of providing our students with the most memorable elementary experience possible. A new event that we'd like to highlight tonight is our Evening with the Arts. Here is Ms. Furlong and Mrs. Litempio summarizing why the now annual event in the spring was such a success.
Hi, I'm Anna Litempio and I'm a new year teacher at Smallwood.
And I'm Julie Fromm, Smallwood Vocal Music. We would like to share with you about a new event that celebrates the visual, musical, and literary arts happening at Smallwood. Our Evening with the Arts event is a night where we come together as a Smallwood community of students, families, and teachers. To prepare, students work together in art, music, and library classes to showcase their skills in each content area.
At the event, students and families can walk through an art gallery installation where we work together to create. They can attend student performances throughout the evening and hear stories and learn about our library program. The event evolved as a post-COVID merging of several events that were previously occurring, such as the Pancake Breakfast Art Show and our annual spring concerts. Our current leadership has encouraged collaboration amongst our special areas team, and we felt that combining these events allows our Smallwood families the opportunity to see all of the wonderful arts programs happening in Smallwood. This collaborative event gives kids and families an experience that shows how much Smallwood values the arts as a whole while highlighting students individually.
Watching students walk through our Under the Sea Art Installation or stand on stage with their peers to sing for their families in the audience was truly a magical experience for us. Each student created at least one piece of artwork to add to our glowing ocean during art classes. We also worked in our music classes to prepare songs for each grade level to perform together. These events helped students to understand how we collaborate and work together to create something bigger than what we are capable of on our own.
Our Smallwood families love attending the Evening with the Arts. The feedback we received from Smallwood parents and grandparents was overwhelmingly positive. And the main question that was asked was, can we make this an annual event? I think that families really enjoy coming together, especially after we weren't able to gather for so long to experience the work that their students created. We are already planning and looking forward to this year's celebration on May 19, 2023.
We hope that all of our Smallwood families will join us to celebrate their students' visual, musical, and literary achievements.
Our philosophy at Smallwood is simple. Provide our students with the best possible experience that fosters a love for learning and school. Our staff of 125 adults continue to go above and beyond to make Smallwood a very special place to go to school. From principals on a shelf to visits and read alouds from former Buffalo Bills Stevie Johnson, from coming together and celebrating Mantra Mondays to busting ghosts on Halloween to glow dance parties with the principals. Memories are being made for the children that attend our school, and as a result, smiles, excitement, and a love for school is evident every day. On Friday, October 21st, with the full permission of the students' family, we celebrated a very special accomplishment for one of our own, Evie. In September of 2020, Evie was diagnosed with leukemia. Her entire Smallwood family watched as she took on this heroic fight for two years, pending treatments at Roswell. This fall, she defeated cancer and rang the victory bell in the pediatric unit. To celebrate this significant accomplishment, our entire school community wore orange and gave this little girl a memory she will never forget. As I shared, we try to make every day at Smallwood special. Here's a glimpse of a real moment that will be cherished by all of us for a long, long time. Okay, my friends, uh, when I pause down here, uh, I'll close, okay? We're just listening to this new Procher. Listen, uh, today's a really special day for our school, okay? And we're celebrating a really special person, okay? For those of you that don't know, this is Evie Van Cusso. Okay, Evie is a fifth-grade student in our school. And as you hopefully saw today on the TV, okay, and then we've talked about Evie for the last two years, okay, has been going down to the hospital and getting treatments, okay? Or an illness that she has since defeated. And when you defeat the illness that Evie has beat, you ring a bell. So last week, Evie rang the bell. Very, very special moment for her and her family. And the Smallwood family, okay, is really, really important to all of us. And when someone in our family does something special and we're proud of it, we celebrate it. And so today, we are celebrating Evie. We are wearing orange and we are also eating some special cookies that Mrs. Samuel and cafeteria staff made for us, honoring Evie and the special accomplishment of ringing that bell. So I just went up and grabbed Evie from class. I need to bring her back. But I know that all of you wanted to see her, and I was thinking that we could put our hands together and give her a round of applause. Why don't we, why don't we sing a song for Evie because I have to bring her back, okay? A lovely love song, and so we can cheer up and sing the paw song to you, okay? Here we go. Paws up and make your voice, paws up and make your voice. Paws up and make your voice, paws up and make your voice. Let's be a friend and live a true life. Be respectful, be helpful, be generous, be loyal. Thank you, there are no paws. I said. I said. This day, this thing is great because of all of you and it's great because of students like Evie. Again, thank you, everybody. Let's hear it for Evie one more time. We want to thank you for your continued support of us as building administrators and our school. We'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Is that for anybody or is that for just the Board of Education? Because I'm actually glad I came to this meeting because we're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion and SEL. So other questions just for you guys?
Unfortunately, we don't interact with the public except at the beginning of the meeting. So you can send an email to the Board of Education or reach out to your principal and talk to them at a different time if that's okay.
So you guys will never answer questions at the beginning of the meeting?
At the beginning of the meeting, we would have, yes.
Okay, no, that's fine, but I just, I want to make sure I follow protocol. So if I send you an email to the Board of Education and then you guys read it, we can discuss it at the beginning of the meeting or is it after discretion?
Yeah, how about we'll send you the information or you can contact, and we'll talk about it another time. Okay. I think it's important.
You can see me after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. But thank you for your interest. We appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Corger, I did see the hockey reference.
The hat-trick. The hat-trick.
Listen, we have to get it in there, right? My dad would be proud. Thank you.
Ms. John, thank you very much. The last piece of the superintendent's report is our high school students and teachers of the month for November and December. So as we have continued, Mr. Pigeon provided a video for us to watch to celebrate our students and teachers of the month.
Thank you as always for this wonderful opportunity to shine a spotlight on the great students and wonderful staff at Amherst Central High School. I thank our Board of Education and Superintendent Penella for this opportunity. Without further ado, I'll jump in. November, Students of the Month, Josh Pogara, Maya Hill, and Ms. Martin. Josh, wonderful student, well-known commodity at Amherst, was nominated by Miss Evans for something very special that is a quality of his. He's very, very kind and a good friend to many of our special needs students, often seen speaking, sitting with them, genuinely having conversations, listening. So Josh is really a good friend to all at Amherst. On top of that, inside the classroom, top-notch students and great students, I should say, and a great athlete currently on our basketball team that's on quite a run this season. So congratulations to you, Josh. Very well deserved. Maya Hill, active student at Amherst. She has been a big part of our stage crew for many years and is one of the crew chiefs and really does a lot of work related to our stage set, our theatrical setup at Amherst, and behind the scenes for operetta, drama productions, et cetera. A big worker in that regard. This year specifically, she was nominated for founding the Amherst Central High School Cheese Club, believe it or not. And it's been a huge success. Well-attended events, over 50 students involved in the club. She has spirited many of the events, purchasing the cheese, the selection, the setup, et cetera. She was a part of our second and third meeting. We were able to secure a grant from Wegmans for that. So it's really a fun and tasty club and something new at Amherst that's very upbeat and very positive. So congratulations to you, Maya, for being one of the founders in all the things that you do at Amherst. Ms. Martin was nominated this month as well. She was nominated by one of her students who shared that Ms. Martin always wants the best for her students, keeps us on track in so many regards, and really makes sure all of our work is done. So always a strong advocate for her students and really keeping them on track. Outside the classroom, she's been a leader in a lot of different realms across the district. Specifically, I'll add that she's been a class advisor many, many times. I think I can note in my own memory three prompts that she has been involved in. So being that leader for the students their freshman year through senior year is so important around here, and Ms. Martin's been willing to step up and do it many times and do it well. So that's memorable for students. So kudos to you, Ms. Martin, and thank you for everything that you do. Moving on to December, we have students Carson Bellisle, Sophie Giordano, and Coach Frymire and Coach Files. Starting with Carson, there's so much to list. Carson is a tremendously active, high-performing student and an all-around good kid. He's been involved in so many things. He's been operetta lead. He's lead guitar in our school rock band. He's in the jazz band, jazz combo, varsity singers, concert career, wind ensemble. He's placed in ECMEA Tuba All-State for Acoustic Guitar, Vice President of DECA. Currently placed in DECA and will be going to our regional competition in March in Rochester. He was recently honored as completing the Toastmasters Public Speaking Program. He's been a trailblazer. He's on the baseball team. He's been one of my pathfinders. Conducted student and parent tours for the building. He's on the baseball team, captain of the golf team, and qualified for sectionals this year. On top of all that, he holds his own in the classroom and does a really good job academically and is active with his classmates, a good friend to many. So Carson, very well deserved. I've known Carson since he was a little boy, and I'm not surprised that he has flourished at Amherst High School. So congratulations to you, Carson. Moving on to Sophie, and the next, actually, three nominees have a central theme. They were very important players when we had a young lady's student tiger that was significantly injured in the fall and had quite an injury. And the students, the staff, the adults rallied around this young lady and her family. Sophia was a big part of that. She organized a big campaign to send cards to her friend. And then on top of that, she's been very, very active in our student council, putting on those wonderful events that our student council delivers, whether it's Fall Fest or our pep rallies, our senior weeks, et cetera. There's just a lot of great things and a lot of great spirit and pride that comes from student council, and it comes from students alike from Sophia who do the work. So Sophia, congratulations to you for being a good friend and also being a great tiger in terms of your work with student council. Coach Frymire and Coach Files, again, were there to support this young student and her family in their time of need. And when I say they were there, like, they were there physically, on-site at the hospital almost daily. They were a big help to me and our crisis team in terms of communication and onsite support to the family. Even to the level of Coach Frymire traveling to Boston to visit this child. So it's really a true commitment to the family and the student, and they really were a huge support and continue to be a support. Just kind of special adults reflective of what Amherst is. We're a family. And what you're seeing there in Coach Files and Coach Frymire are kind of like older sisters or aunts. They really become family members with our students and families, and it's what makes people like that, coaches like that, all of these students and individuals you sought this evening are what Amherst is all about, what Tiger pride is all about. So we're always pleased to have an opportunity to shine a spotlight on what makes Amherst unique and what makes Amherst great. So I thank you for that opportunity. So have a great rest of your meeting and thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'll need a motion for new business. I'll make a motion to approve new business items, one, A through W, two, B through E, and three, B, C, D, E, G, and H. For the second? I'll second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. And are there any follow-up items? Please go ahead. I do not have any. Then I'll need a motion for us to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person and litigation.
For the second? All in favor? Aye. Aye. And thank you very much. convene to executive session. Thank you all for coming.